President.
Councilmember Mail.
Here.
Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Koreshi.
Here.
Councilmember Schultz.
Here.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith, this evening is in Annapolis for the beginning of the legislative session, representing our city. And Councilmember Kovar is on travel and will return to us next week. Looking at additional agenda items, don't think there's anything else for this evening. Next week, there will actually be two council meetings. On January 19th, Tuesday, at 6:30 PM in the hydrangea room, the council will be meeting to discuss priorities as we get ready to look at the budget for next year. This is a public meeting, so if people from the city would like to attend that meeting, please do so. Again, at 6:30 in the hydrangea room. Then on our regular nights, on Wednesday nights, January 20th, we will have a report on our annual financial report and audit, and our actuarial report from the police pension plan. We will also have an update from Brad Stewart, the Vice President and Protoss of Montgomery College regarding their facility's master plan. On the following week, again, we have two meetings. On Tuesday, January 26th, again, we will have a budget priority meeting at 6:30 in the hydrangea room, and then the regular council meeting on Wednesday, February 3rd. That -- what did I say? Right, sorry.
Move back one.
I did. I just skipped January 27th, because that's going to be a long night. Thank you. On January 27th, we have our regular council meeting. We will be joined by the President of Washington Adventist Hospital to discuss the hospital move and the Tacoma Park campus. During the regular meeting, we will have a first reading ordinance of a budget amendment, and tentatively scheduled a resolution regarding the closing of Anne Street for the Crossroads Farmers Market, and a resolution authorizing the architect to proceed with the library design. We will also have an ordinance authorizing the purchase of a replacement police car, and two work sessions. One, for the Safe Roadways Committee recommendations, and the City Manager's quarterly report. Now, moving on to the next week, Wednesday, February 3rd. That week, we will have the second reading ordinance of our budget amendment. Also, tentatively scheduled is an update on the multifamily and business recycling program, a discussion of an ordinance banning plastic bags, a discussion of an ordinance establishing a vacant and abandoned property registry, and we have tentatively scheduled on February 3rd, a discussion of a ZTA proposed by County Councilmember Tom Hucker regarding medical marijuana dispensaries. That is it for our upcoming agenda items. Now we can turn to public comments. If anyone has a public comment this evening, please come to the podium, state your name and where you live, and you have three minutes.
This is Pat Lovelace, your official Peach delegate. I want to ask the City Council a couple of questions. One is, would it be possible if we got electric chargers, solar-powered automobiles, so that we can lead the way in getting away from fossil fuels? Because we saw in December how our climate has been following wild ups and downs, and what direction it's heading in, that the cherry blossoms were blossoming earlier, and now it could damage the trees. And I'd like to see us getting away from fossil fuels, and if we could get electric-powered, electric solar-powered car chargers, so that we could lead the way in that, I'd really appreciate it. Another thing is, I want to thank Karen from Lifelong Tacoma for helping me get this hospital bed, which I think I'd be still on the want right now if it wasn't for her. Because right after she got -- we talked about it. She talked to a few people, my social worker, and something happened, got the ball rolling real quick, and I had to bed the next day. That Tuesday, that next day I got the call that was coming in that Tuesday. And I'm very happy to add that. I no longer rested on an iron bar under a deflated mattress on a defective bed, because I was resting, sleeping on an iron bar every night for eight months. I couldn't tolerate that much longer. Another thing, I want to thank her very much, Karen of Lifelong Tacoma. She helped that, she also helped prevent further losses in my insurance. Somehow or another, that really stirred the pot up, and things got moving real fast. I thank you, Karen, very much. Also, I want to ask the City Council if they, we can get a program for Collins. Lovelace wants a program for Collins, so that people can call in and I get the public comment period if they can't get out to a meeting. Because there's been times I've wanted to call in and I can't get in, and I wish we had a program for Collins. There's no reason why we can't. That would open up the right to participate much wider, because some people in their 80s or 90s cannot get out. And I'd like to see more public participation. It would really, really widen my dream to get public participation if we had a program for Collins. And another thing, too, is I want to welcome the City Council back to the podium for 2016, or back to the dais. And I want to welcome other people who are taking part in the public comment. Welcome back, and Happy New Year. Happy New Year, 2016. And I want to see more people working for Peach. And Martin Luther King's birthday is coming up on the 18th, and I want you people to join me down in southeast DC for the Martin Luther King Parade and Peace Walk. We do this every year down in southeast DC, Anacostia. And I want to see other people participating in this, too. Remember, the holiday season is not over yet until we celebrate Martin Luther King's birthday. It starts in Thanksgiving and ends with Dr. Martin Luther King's birthday. And remember that, keep the holiday season, it's not over yet. Remember, 18th, Martin Luther King's birthday. Do something for Peach, do something for nonviolence. We love it, we love it, we love it.
Thank you, Pat.
Good evening. My name is Wayne Sherwood. I live on Grant Avenue. And I'm here to talk about the pool, which is really an old and a current and an upcoming agenda item. It just seems to be ongoing. And I wrote a memo and sent it to the city clerk this morning and asked her to distribute it. It has really my testimony in it, and it's a very complicated situation, so I'm not even going to try to cover all these different issues in my three minutes and two and a half minutes, and just try to highlight a few things. One thing is that the pool is being used more and more and more. I was over there Sunday night. The thing was full at 6 o'clock at night. I'm so glad to see the utilization increasing. The two items I'd like to highlight is the county budget process, and secondly, the capital planning feasibility study. The county budgets, Ike Leggett has invited input, and there are several hearings in January, including one next Wednesday night, and the last one is on the 25th. I'd strongly encourage the city to send something over there. We haven't usually done that. Send a request over there in advance, asking what we would really like to see in there for the pool. We usually wait until after they eliminate it and say, "No more funding," and then we generate a lot of opposition, and we get the county council to put the money back in. And that's worked in the past in a way, but I think it would be better if we at least accepted the invitation to make an input and send something over there. I would like to go over there myself next week, and if there's no official figure, I'll probably ask for whatever we got this year, which I think is 150, and ask for an extra 10 or something like that, 160,000, with a couple of footnotes, especially that I don't think that ACS, the Adventist Community Service, should have to include in their budgets, this $40,000 that they pay to the ICB to keep the pool open on the days when the school is open. That just shouldn't be in there. They shouldn't have to. So they should be able to use that money for other things. The second thing is the capital planning process. I'm really grateful to the City Council for getting the MCPS people in December. I thought that was an excellent presentation. It's an eye-opener. I had sort of no idea of all that stuff that was going on. Thanks especially to Tim for laying out all of his analysis of the budget investments, or lack of it, at that school over there. And so I'd like to ask the City Council to follow up on that very quickly and ask, "When does that process start, and can we be a part of the process of reviewing, especially the scope of services with a consultant?" Because you have to get involved at the very beginning if you're going to have an influence on what happens on that. So that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Arthur David Olson, Hancock Avenue. And very briefly, with the city's recent refugee resolution in mind, I want to let folks know that there's going to be a session this week. Linda Rabbin, who normally goes to the Adelphi Quaker meeting, will be visiting our Tacoma Park Quaker meeting to speak on the current state of refugees. There'll be a session on that. This will include information on Syrian refugees, other refugees in Europe, Central American asylum seekers in Maryland, and local initiatives to help refugees and asylum seekers. So if folks are interested in figuring out how we can not only say that we welcome refugees to Tacoma Park, but actually find a way to do it, this may be a session to attend. Linda is a Tacoma Park president and has published seven books on human rights. The session will be at about 11:30 on the 17th, and that's going to be at the Dance Exchange. And everybody is welcome, Quaker or non-Qaker. We will have our usual meeting for worship at 10 o'clock, and as always, everyone is welcome to that. And I do have brief write-ups if anybody would like a reminder of the event coming up. So see me if you would like that. Thank you.
Good evening, and Happy New Year to one and all. And as we approach Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday, I would like to remind the council that the tree that we planted out in front of the library is a memorial tree, and the goings-on regarding the library expansion, whatever you want to call it. I'm not real happy with the changing of the library entrance to the parking lot, because that's going to remove even more parking spaces, which many people realize there's a premium at certain times of day for parking out there. Plus, I think the original design of the library, and I would like to, now that the council has reconstituted itself, that they maybe slow the process down a little bit. I've attended every, one of the meetings, and no offense to Mr., is it Luke Meyer, I believe, but he has some ideas that aren't necessarily in sync with the community. Number one, I'm very distressed by the suggestion that the library be closed for a year, because having been around a few times in this world, when they say a year, generally it probably means longer. And rarely do those kinds of projects come in under budget and under time. And that would pretty much kill the library for a lot of small children. And the library is all about developing, we love the printed word in our small residents. And, you know, just, what was it? This morning, yeah, I was crossing the street, and there was a guy, and actually, I was waiting for the bus, and the guy was bringing his small preschool children to the library. It was not noon, so I had to yell to him, "Hey, the library's closed." That's what it's all about. And to do the kind of project that they've got proposed thus far without some kind of staging where the library is not closed for a continuum of at least a year would make a heck of a lot of sense. And that area that's the void, that is the parking level below grade, where the police department is, that's the most logical place to expand. And I have some questions about the whole necessity for this gargantuan expansion, because as a regular user of the library, I live across the street and am in the library just about every day, I've seen the amount of usage that the library gets, and a lot of times, the library is certainly underused. And I don't mean in any way to suggest that we should change that, but I would also like to go back to the Martin Luther King Jr. tree, because if you'll go out and take a moment and look at it, the city has been remiss in the stone that's out there, there's actually a piece of concrete, and it's sort of a plaque, and currently, the plaque is sitting at an angle that's about 45 degrees. So I would hope that the city would, with all the vast amount of funding we do, spend a few bucks and get that thing set up correctly, so that next year, because I realize it's a little too late this year, next year, that tree will have a proper presentation. Thank you very much, and again, Happy New Year to one and all.
Thank you very much. And now, we have a proclamation recognizing the passing of Steve Del Giudice. And as I read this, you can see some wonderful pictures that the staff had put together of Mr. Del Giudice. Whereas in 1985, Steve Del Giudice and his family lived in the Hillwood Manor neighborhood of Tacoma Park, which was in Prince George's County at the time. And whereas Mr. Del Giudice practiced law in the District of Columbia and served as a member of the faculty of the George Washington University Law School Clinical Program, where he created a federal and appellate litigation program that exists to this day. And whereas Mr. Del Giudice was elected mayor of Tacoma Park in 1985, defeating incumbent Mayor Sam Abbott by eight votes. And whereas he was elected again in 1987 and in 1989, but resigned in December 1999 to serve on the Prince George's County Council after running a successful writing campaign to win the District Two seat. He served on the Prince George's County Council until 1998. And whereas as mayor and then as Prince George's County Council member, Mr. Del Giudice was a strong supporter and advocate for Tacoma Park unification into one county. And whereas while on the county council, he was able to broker a majority of the county council in 1993 to support a joint Prince George's and Montgomery County referendum on unification. This provided much-needed momentum towards gaining approval from the Prince George's County delegation, and then the General Assembly, to allow the joint referendum in 1995, resulting in the 1997 unification of Tacoma Park into Montgomery County. And whereas a majority achievement, excuse me, whereas a major achievement during his tenure as mayor was to rewrite the city charter to restructure this council and give the mayor a vote. And whereas Mr. Del Giudice provided the leadership for a number of other positive changes in Tacoma Park, among them, negotiation of the first fire service agreement between Montgomery County, Prince George's County, and the city of Tacoma Park in 1985, enacting the 1986 tenant right of first refusal legislation, negotiating the city's first police rebate agreement with Montgomery County in 1988, transferring stormwater management responsibilities to the city in 1989, and successfully carrying out the city's centennial celebration in 1990. And whereas, 25 years later, in April 2015, Mr. Del Giudice returned to Tacoma Park to take part in the 125th anniversary celebration, where he met and reminisced with present and former Tacoma Park mayors, city council members, and others. And whereas, the community was saddened to learn of his passing on December 17th, 2015. Now therefore, I, Kate Stewart, Mayor of the City of Tacoma Park, Maryland, on behalf of the council, residents, and staff, extend our condolences to the friends and family of Mr. Del Giudice, including his wife Sheila Driscoll, his children Kara Lingle and Nicholas Del Giudice, his son-in-law Brian Lingle, his children Colton and Grayson Lingle, and his brothers Peter, Dante, Michael, and Joseph Del Giudice. Furthermore, I hereby proclaim our appreciation for his service to the Tacoma Park community, and note the place of Mr. Del Giudice in the history of Tacoma Park. Now we'll move on to council comments. Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. Nice to be back after our holiday. Over a year ago, this council expressed our concern about the treatment of animals with the foie gras product, and we asked all residents of Tacoma Park to not purchase foie gras. I have been surprised to hear from a complaint from one of the city residents that the co-op has started to sell foie gras. And I wonder if city staff could check into that, see if it's true, and express our concerns with that product. Appreciate it. And then I also wanted to follow up on the comments about the Martin Luther King celebration this year. There is going to be a service day on Monday, and people who are interested in doing community work in Tacoma Park on Monday can call Howard Cohn or contact him. And then Monday evening, from 5 until 7:30, we're going to have a community celebration at the Tacoma Park Middle School, from 5 PM until 7:30 PM. It's a potluck dinner, so bring something to share, and enjoy the festivities. Thank you.
Councilmember Mail.
Thank you. Welcome back, everyone. It's good to be back. I just want to go through a set of small issues fairly quickly. On the issue of solar car chargers, or electric car chargers, we were actually approached by a company last year who wanted to install some for free, so I will dig up that email and send it back to the city manager and mayor. There is a housing subdivision of two lots that currently have one house each that is being subdivided into what will be five lots. The two existing houses will remain, and three new houses will be added. I have not heard significant concerns from residents in Ward 2, although there's been email discussion about the subdivision, and invited comment tonight, and we did not receive any. It doesn't mean to say that there isn't interest and feedback, support, or opposition, per se, but just informing my colleagues and the city staff of what I've heard so far. I appreciate the city staff's follow-up so far with zoning violations that have gone on, associated with construction on Colby Avenue. My understanding is that there's a new aspect to that complaint, which was that the permit was for renovation of the house, but the entire structure may have been demolished. So in addition to the other violations, that may also be a piece of this, and I believe there's photo evidence of that. So I'd ask the city staff to be diligent and continue to follow up and visit the site as well. And I have some other information I'll share in writing. I'm interested in follow-up on the issue of the ICB fee for the pool, because potentially that's, it's new to me. I'd ask, and I am interested in Councilmember Schultz's comments on this, whether at some point in the spring, we could plan for some sort of educational approach to enforcement of sign, our sign ordinances and laws, facade protection for New Hampshire Avenue, the Tacoma Park side of the New Hampshire Avenue corridor, for businesses that have very extensive signage, which seems to be way out of compliance with our ordinance, and welcome discussion with staff about what that might look like. And then I think we'd had a discussion a few months ago about trying to get a positive reminder to residents about the importance of shoveling snow as in a mailed postcard. I don't think that's happened, but I just wanted to repeat my enthusiastic support for doing something like that before it snows. Thank you.
Councilmember Koreshi.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy New Year, everyone. Some might think this might be my last city council meeting of the year, because I might win the Powerball tonight, but I'm actually, I'm actually going to stay on. I just want to commit myself to the city and to Ward 3.
Wait, is that tonight?
You could take care of the whole budget for New Hampshire.
I guess I could.
Please, please.
There is a Koreshi pool.
Yes. Had to get in a Powerball joke. But I want to echo Councilmember Siemens' comments in regards to the MLK Day. You know, we often perceive it as just another day off, a Monday holiday, and I think we should all perceive it as a day of service. There's a lot of opportunities in our community. Howard Cohn sent out a very extensive email about things people in the community here in Tacoma Park can do to live on Martin Luther King Jr.'s legacy. For those who are interested, I can forward you the email, but it ranges anything from cutting invasive lines in McLaughlin Woods from 10 to 1 PM, to picking up litter in a number of locations near the middle school, elementary school, and behind Long Branch. And then also the celebration that Councilmember Siemens talked about, about setting up for that event, serving food, and also assisting with cleanup, and not only participating in the celebration. So I hope people come out on Monday. Another thing I just wanted to raise, and this echoes what Arthur Olson mentioned, a number of members of the community have reached out to me about the next steps for this Syrian refugee placement, and Marilyn Abbott, who's in the audience, is one of those people. I should just note, you know, I think this was noted during council comments at the time this resolution passed, which is, I think everyone is aware, this city as a jurisdiction is very limited in how much it can do with respect to placement, because it's federal authority and federal jurisdiction on this issue. But I have offered to a number of people, and I would encourage others who are participating online or watching at home, to contact me in the next week or two, as I'm trying to put together at least a coordination meeting for all interested parties, so that they can share thoughts and come up with a cohesive plan about how they can share their resources and expertise to create a system where they can welcome Syrian refugees in this community. It wouldn't be necessarily a city council-sponsored thing, but I'm happy to be the point of contact for folks who've actually reached out to me and put them together in a room somewhere to have that discussion. So I just wanted to raise that issue, and other than that, I have nothing else, but I am happy about our Wednesday meetings, and I just want to, I just want to make that point for the record.
Councilmember Schultz.
It's, well, let me say Happy New Year to everybody. It's almost getting too late in the calendar for anyone to start saying that, because it's halfway to February practically. But while we have been away, as a city council, the city has been continuing, our employees have been continuing to go to work, and issues have been continuing to be worked on. Some of those things I would like to mention right now. For one thing, the planning, Montgomery County Planning Board met last week, and they had a, held a hearing and discussion on the proposed development of a Taco Bell restaurant at the corner of New Hampshire Avenue and Holton Lane. A number of people came to testify in favor and opposed to it. I was present, did not testify, because the city had already sent in its own resolution with regard to it. But nevertheless, the planning board did approve the site plan as submitted without amendment or any conditions by the developer. So that means, therefore, that the project will be going forward sometime this calendar year, no doubt will be constructed this calendar year. With regard to Councilmembers, Councilmember Mail's comments a moment ago with regard to commercial signage, there has been some development on that, and that is, that was initiated by the Crossroads Development Authority, namely Melanie Isis. She had been, had written about a month or so ago a letter to the Department of Permitting Services, was able to track down the individual who's actually responsible for doing the fieldwork with regard to enforcing the sign ordinance, which is a county ordinance, not a city ordinance. And this person has responded, after some pressure from her and myself, to do something about it. And the first thing that apparently the Department of Permitting Services is going to do was, is to prepare a brochure in English and Spanish that will be distributed to all the businesses in the New Hampshire Crossroads corridor, to let them know what the law is. And that brochure will be put together by the county and dispersed by the county, or mailed, hopefully mailed. And then they said, after they wait a discreet period of time, I don't know how long that is, we still don't know, then they will begin some sort of an enforcement process. I'm a little disappointed that people need to be informed about the law, because no one's ever told me that anything to the contrary, that ignorance of the law is, other than, doesn't, doesn't serve as an excuse. And I would just simply wish that the county would just go ahead and enforce the thing, the ordinance, the law, because as the ordinance, the law, because, as Councilmember Mail has duly noted, the abuse of the sign ordinance in that whole commercial corridor is absolutely extraordinary. But, so there is progress on it. I'm going to continue to monitor it very closely, working with the CDA. And this is not to supplant your wish to have some sort of educational effort on that, because frankly, the sign ordinance applies to the whole city, not just to the, our area along New Hampshire Avenue. And there's just been a tremendous amount of neglect. We can point the finger at the county, but also it's pointing the finger at ourselves, because we just have not been conscientious enough to even draw the attention of the sign ordinance, at least to my knowledge, to the, to the local businesses. Apparently, that's what's going to happen. So hopefully, there's a step in that direction. Also, one, another thing that I, that has come about more and more to my attention is, we have a provision in our housing code that allows for something that is unique to Tacoma Park, not to, and not in Montgomery County at large, is called group homes, which are more or less, for lack of a better term, the legalization of boarding houses, which were, it's been on the city's books for many, many years. And I'm not going to go into the whys and wherefore of it, but the concern is, that I think that we want to try to address, is when you get a number of these group homes located on the same street, then you can have a huge number of people living in pretty high density, because there's no, there are no constraints on the numbers of people who can live in a unit, or within, or combined within a particular property, with a concomitant outcome of a lawful lot of automobiles being parked on the street, and people not having leases, or anything of that nature. I think the concept behind group homes is a very worthy one, because it does address a very strong need for affordable housing. But I think we need to revisit the, because I'm seeing some of the impacts of this in my own neighborhood, and they're not very pretty. That's all I'm going to say on that subject right now. And finally, with regard to the late Mayor Stephen J. Del Judas, I would like us to, as a city council, to task the Commemoration Commission with the, with deciding on the best way to commemorate Mr. Del Judas's service to the city, because you read the, if you heard the proclamation, had it perhaps not been for his being on the Prince George's County Council, we might never have achieved unification. And that by and of itself is worthy of a monument, frankly, in my humble opinion. I know we give an enormous amount of commemoration to Sammy Abbott, after whom this building is named, for saving the city from major interstate highway cutting right through the heart of it, destroying a good portion of the city. No question about the importance of that, but Mr. Del Judas accomplished a number of remarkable things in a very short five years of service to this, to this city, and future years on the Prince George's County Council. And I think his, we have not, we need to do his memory, do honor and respect, so that people appreciate what was accomplished in those years, and his leadership in doing that. So that would be a request that I make to this council. I'm done. Finally.
Thank you. Thank you. I just have a couple of announcements myself this evening. First, I want to thank Laura Barclay and the Old Town Business Association for organizing a number of ribbon cuttings in Tacoma, D.C. this past weekend. I was able to join Councilmember Siemens, as well as D.C. City Councilmember Brandon Todd, and some of the neighborhood commissioners at the ribbon cutting. And in particular, Ryzam D.C., which is a nonprofit on the D.C. side, is an organization that received a city grant, a Tacoma Park city grant, so that it could open, and is a community space for promoting creativity and social engagement. And the folks who are behind Ryzam D.C. were very glad to see Councilmember Siemens and I there, and they were very thankful for the city's support. Today, I attended the Council on Governments Board Meeting in D.C. The new board chair is County Council Vice President Roger Berliner, and he outlined the goals for the board for the upcoming year. The two goals are focusing on Wamata and the growing the regional economy. At the meeting, we had a chance to hear from the new general manager of Wamata, his plans and his priorities. This is the 40th anniversary year of the Metro, and the general manager said he's going to strive to reinvigorate the pride there used to be in Metro. And so, tough job ahead. Also, I'd like to call people's attention and to thank County Council Executive Ike Leggett and our Montgomery County Council, as well as the Prince George's County Council, for statements that they have recently made regarding deportation threats facing residents in our communities. I urge residents to take a look at these statements. In particular, I'll just read one of the things I thought was important to underscore. The Montgomery County statement said, "We are proud of the people who have come to Montgomery County from every corner of the globe. You have enriched our community, and you will always be welcome here." And that was from County Executive Ike Leggett and our Montgomery County Council. So I just want to thank them for putting out those statements. Another thing I want to draw people's attention to, it is a new year, and if you look at our police vehicles, they are getting a new look. There are new decals on the police vehicles, which make them much more visible and approachable. They're much more colorful. And as a number of residents know, members on this council have been talking about the police vehicles, speaking with our police department and residents on how to improve them, and I'm glad to see the new look, and I just wanted to extend my thanks to the police department for being responsive to residents and the council's requests. Finally, as we start the new year, we're moving ahead with planning the first community conversation. As people may remember, the council discussed at the close of last year our hope to hold quarterly meetings, at which we bring together residents, experts, and the city staff, ourselves, the city council, as well as national experts to discuss priority issues. And we decided that the first priority issue we're going to tackle this year is affordable housing. So on February 6th, from 9:30 to about 1:15, here in the community center, we will have our first community conversation meeting. We have experts from the city staff, the community, as well as national experts, who will come, discuss the city's current approach to housing issue, current trends in the area, and some new ideas that cities like ourselves might be able to look into. So I hope we see a number of people here on February 6th. Those are all the notes and updates I had. Does the city manager have any?
Yes, I passed out my city manager comments that will be posted with the agenda package on the website. I'll just do a couple of highlights. The Martin Luther King holiday is celebrated here, of course, and so our city offices and facilities are closed Sunday and Monday. And I also agree, it's a day to serve, it's a day on for service. I wanted to mention that most Tacoma Park residents that own property have received tax assessment notices. I've prepared a letter from the city manager that's on the website that tells a little bit more information about how those assessments are used, what the process is going forward, and some direction about if there's an interest in appealing them and that kind of thing. We had a meeting today with the Montgomery County Office of the State Department of Assessments and Taxation on another matter, but the director took me aside, and she said, "Tacoma Park's hot. The housing values have really gone up." And she says, "I'm sure you're hearing about that from your residents, but that really the, the numbers in terms of the purchase prices of homes have, have really gone up recently." So it was, stood out in Montgomery County, apparently, the activity in Tacoma Park. One of the things that's happened since the council last met is that the certificate of need was granted to Washington and Venice Hospital to move its acute care campus. Most of the details about that were identified, about what would be left on the campus as we know it right now, were written about in the most recent newsletter, so people can go and look at that. There'll be a lot of work yet to do on how, what the transition is going forward, what that means for zoning, and, and shared uses. One of the potential shared uses is something with, related to a pool, and so we'll be pursuing that discussion as well. On the Tacoma Junction development, I just want people to know, that's still in the negotiation process between the various attorneys with NDC. And once a, an agreement is come to bear on that, it will then be voted on by the council in open session, and we're, at this point, we're looking at March for something to that effect. There'll be, there may be some information back and forth before then, but I do want people to know that that's kind of the schedule that we have and that we anticipate. Similarly, one of these things that we don't have a lot to report on is the dog park. The staff is working with Park and Planning with their conditions for crossing their property to get to our property for the dog park. We're still waiting to learn a little bit more about what might be required with the sediment and erosion control permit. We had done a number of, some clearing and that kind of thing already, but we'll have to see if there's so many other conditions that come up on that, and once we know, we'll let you know as well. Want to mention a couple county public hearings coming up. Two public hearings before the county council are scheduled for January 19th at 1:30 p.m. One is a rescheduled public hearing for the Comcast franchise. We've already had testimony on that. It was the same testimony that we provided the county executive. As, the other is on the Tacoma zoning text amendment, Tacoma Park overlay cannabis dispensing, and we'll be sending a letter that simply says the council's not taken a position yet on that. The other has been mentioned by a couple folks, and that has to do with the interest, kind of a town hall discussion of the Montgomery County budget on next Wednesday at 7:00 at the Silver Springs Civic Center. It's an opportunity for people to attend and express their views on the budget. One of the things that I've attached is a budget schedule, and this is something that I think is just useful to give a sense about what the workload is, the timing on the various steps of preparing the budget. Most of this is an internal portion, so when, I'm a little slower to answer your emails, you know, you'll have a sense of where I am in the process. Some of the key pieces of this, though, are that at the two retreats that are coming up in the next two weeks, you'll be really setting the direction for our work in proposing a budget. And then somewhere around Valentine's Day, we get the information on the full assessable base, which gives us information about how to set, how that may affect the tax rate, and what you might want to do with the tax rate. Then the, on April 6th, I present the proposed budget in session here in council. There'll be budget work sessions, public hearings, reconciliation, and then budget ordinance is in mid-May. So we've got, and somewhere just before Christmas, I was like, oh my God, April 6th is around the corner. We have a lot to do, but I think I'm excited by even the comments that the council members have made, that I think will get good direction from you going forward, and we look forward to the discussions and the retreats.
Any questions for the city manager?
Yeah, two questions, thank you. First, I would just indicate that I support the city testifying on January 20th at the beginning of that meeting with the county executive, and excusing one council member from our Wednesday meeting to go do that. I think that would be a good use of our time to testify about the pool and any other high priorities. And then second, I know that the audit is on our agenda for next week, I believe?
Yes.
And that's not yet on the website? Will it be available sooner? Is it?
It's there.
It is now available?
It's there.
I looked tonight, and I didn't, but.
It's in two places. It's on the budget documents page, and it's also with the agenda, there's a link in the agenda packet that's posted.
It's just set up as a link?
It's set up as a link.
Okay.
To the document.
Okay, thank you.
And actually, I really encourage you all to read that. It will be, you know, it's always a fairly substantive discussion when the presentations are made by the auditor, and, and the information about the police pension fund. One of the things that I find, the CAFR, the annual financial report, sometimes seems a little daunting, but there's a lot of good, understandable information in there when you go and read it. And so, it's a, it's a useful thing to look through before the presentations next Wednesday. But thanks for, if there's any problem with the, with the link or whatever, we'll get that fixed.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the city manager? No? All right. Moving on to adoption of minutes, we have one set of minutes from November 30th. Would anyone like to move adoption?
So moved.
Councilmember Mail moves, second?
Second.
Councilmember Siemens. Any changes, discussion? All those in favor of adopting the minutes from November 30th, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstaining? All right, minutes passed unanimously. Before we move on to our consent agenda, I'd like to just get back to what Councilmember Schultz requested regarding Mayor Steve Del Judas, and if there is any comment from other council members. Councilmember Schultz, I believe you are on the Commemoration Committee, is that correct?
No.
No?
No, I am not on it. I was one who created, came up with the idea, and I'll say one, because Mayor Bruce Williams contends that it was him, and I contend, no, no, you've got it wrong, it's me, and his absence, he's not here to defend himself, so I will share the glory.
I thought that fight was over.
Oh, of course not. No. No, honor is involved here.
Okay.
So, no, I'm not on the, I don't serve on it.
Thank you. And if anyone had any comments or any regarding asking the Commemoration Committee to look into honoring Mayor Steve Del Judas?
I would just comment that I, I'm just listening to it for the first time tonight, but I wouldn't support us weighing in on that, not because it's not deserved, but because I'd rather let that commission set its own priorities, and I don't mean to be heartless, but his contributions will be just as important and valid a year from now, or two years from now, if, if we choose to consider them.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I think we should just go ahead.
Okay.
Do it.
All right, well, why don't we do just sort of?
Should I make a motion to that effect? That we?
Why don't you just call them up?
Call them up?
The committee?
Yeah.
And let them review it and consider it? I think that's what Councilmember Mail is saying, let the committee decide.
Yeah, I don't think it requires any, anything. I think they probably would do it anyway, but I just want to make it, make it know that this is something that, as a body, we, we, along with our residents, think it's important.
All right, so then you do want to make a motion to vote on it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd be happy to do that. I'd like to make a motion that we, that we ask the Commemoration Commission to look into it, or words to that effect.
Okay. And would anyone like to second that motion?
I'll second the motion.
All right, all those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Opposed.
Opposed?
Opposed.
All right. Three opposed, two ayes. All right, so we'll move on now to our consent agenda. The items in consent agenda this evening, we have two items, one on a contract for a public art installation, and a single reading audience to award grant funds to the Making a New American, New United People. Would someone like to move the consent agenda?
So moved.
Councilmember Kreschik moves, a second?
I'll second it. I'll second it.
Councilmember Schultz, second it. There are some ordinances here, so we take a roll call vote.
Councilmember Kovar, Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Mayo.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Koreshi.
Aye.
Councilmember Schultz.
Aye.
Mayor Stewart.
Aye. That goes our consent agenda.
I was still waiting for Peter to answer.
All right, and now we'd like to have the Board of Elections present their update.
Hello, my name's Marilyn Abbott. I'm from Ward 1, and I am the current chairman of the Board of Elections. You've been provided with copies of our written report of the recent city election and our 2015 year-end report. There's quite a bit of overlap in those reports as our main efforts in 2015 was the election. The election report includes the information presented to the council November 4th, which was the day after the election. To it, we added the table for the percentage of registered voters casting votes in each ward, and we also added information regarding the number of eligible 16 and 17-year-olds who voted, as well as the number of eligible non-citizens who voted. And we note in this report that the review of the ballots that were deemed either other or invalid on election night were reviewed by the board, and as called election night, all of those votes remained either in that category, either category. The year-end report, our 2015 report, outlines the additional specific outreach and promotion efforts that the Board of Elections took. We also talk about changes to our conduct of the elections and process areas to be looked at before the next election. Briefly concerning outreach and changes to the election, the board, as you're aware, expanded voting into the wards, changed the physical layout of election equipment in the community center. We promoted the election through traditional and non-traditional means. We returned to hand counting the ballots. We brought several activities in-house, including printing ballots and mailing the postcards. And we instituted, or the city clerk instituted, a modified online absentee ballot request and curbside voting. Workflow improvements that we made this past year, or areas identified to be considered before the next election, I'm sorry, were requesting additional staff to support the city clerk just before and then immediately after an election, providing additional language assistance. We've identified Russian and Amharic as languages that if we could get assistance, we would like to have it. Researching alternate hand counting methodologies and new voter accessibility technologies that we've become aware of are out there, you know, pushing a button to call us if you're unable to get out of your car. We would, of course, review all of our written material and our training materials again, and we would look at the physical layout of the polling place to make sure they're still adequate for what we expect the vote to be. The end of this report outlines two projects that we would like to undertake this year or plan to undertake this year. The first one regards the referendum issue on synchronization of the elections, the city election with the state and the county elections, state and federal, I'm sorry. We are moving or have developed or will develop, I should say, a work plan and a calendar, and also research that's needed to inform the council regarding this issue. Toward that end, the city clerk and I did attend an initial meeting with the County Board of Elections to inform them both of the advisory and also to make sure that our understanding of the roles of the county boards and the state boards were what they were, to make sure we understood how the two work together and to move forward. We've made a legal services request to the city attorney to have support as we move forward. And in anticipation of our next meeting of the board, we've set up a process using Google Docs so we can collaborate on different questions, ideas, notes, to be ready to try to work, to get something together and report to you. The second project that we will probably undertake is move forward with an analysis of the Tacoma Park voter turnout. We particularly will look at turnout by voter category. We have the initial data from the state indicating Tacoma Park voter participation and city elections since 2007, so we can go back to 2007. We can request, and we would take guidance from you, data showing Tacoma Park voter participation in federal and state elections during that same time period. And we will update the file that we have with supplemental information that would be Tacoma Park specific. That concludes my notes on it. You do have the reports, and we're available for questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the election board? Councilmember Mayo?
Thank you. For all the work and hours that went into the election, of course, and for the continued work of yourself and the committee, the board, a couple of comments and questions. I find the report that you all put together with the city clerk very helpful, including the data on write-in ballots. And I just want to make sure that when we have this sort of after-election initial, additional data that is pulled together, that that also goes up on the city election website and gets archived correctly, that the information doesn't go away after some period of time. I found some difficulty getting deeper amounts of data from previous years, so I just wanted to note that. The comment that you made about the data file, the state data file, and I wasn't quite certain that it was a request, but I certainly fully support the city and the commission asking for whatever data file that you would like or that could be informative associated either with voting in the city elections or voting by Tacoma Park voters in both city and state-federal elections. So I'm fully supportive of that data, which I know is readily available in machine-readable format and can be very useful. I have a technical question, which is just on my mind for a long time, and so here you are, so maybe I can get it answered. Let's say you're looking at a data file from 2000 and 2010. If a voter was living, and there's two voters, me and you, we both vote in 2000, but in 2010, I'd moved out of town, would I disappear from the 2000 data file? So would change, you know, do they essentially scrub data files when someone leaves a jurisdiction? Or does that person always stay there, but just counts for that one year?
If they've re-registered, they would be removed. Jesse might want to get more detailed on this. If they've put in a registration at a different location, they would be removed.
I understand what you're saying, though, and that's a good question. I will get the answer.
Okay, so the older the data file, the fewer, the less it should match up with our city results?
That's right.
Because those voters will go away.
Right.
And I think that particularly if we have populations that have higher turnover that are leaving the city at a greater frequency, then that would affect some of the geographic or building-by-building turnout. I assume you would share the sort of calendar or timeline that you're putting together for analysis and potential decision-making around the referendum follow-up?
Yes, definitely. We are, we're working on, we've had one meeting where we've discussed this. On one hand, it's overwhelming information, and that's when we came up with the collaborative file. And we'll be able to in February, when we have our meeting, try to hit the ground and move.
And am I correct in thinking that there's sort of two general options? One is that we have voters vote in the state-federal elections and then get in a second line and another where there's potentially one ballot process? Is that generally?
Generally, yes. You could have a consolidated ballot or a separate voting. And one comment I will make is that the county this year will have a different process for its early voting than it does for its general election, and there may be some implications from that.
Okay. And then my last question is, I seem to recall that under the state law that was passed that would allow a municipality to join a state ballot, that we would have to make that request by 18 months before the general, on which it would occur. So we'd need to, we need to know where we're going if that's the option by June of 2016. Is that correct?
We're actually trying to get a firm answer on that, yes. So the date, one reading would be, the date would be by February 2017. We would need to have the request to the state. A different reading interpretation was maybe as early as August 16th, so that is something we're looking into.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Schultz?
I appreciate that with the advisory question, you're moving forward on this, and just listening to, reading your report, listening to your comments, we all, it's an extraordinary complicated set of statistics to analyze and try to figure out the optimal way to go forward. So I'm looking forward to your work on this. And I have two comments, really not so much questions for you, but perhaps more for the city manager. One has to do with, by virtue of doing a hand count of this election, we did not have to sign, have a contract with an election management, or whatever you would call this firm, to provide the electronic equipment and all the other gadgetry that was necessary. And I know that in prior election years, some of those were bids that went out, we spent a considerable amount of money. So I assume we saved a good bit of money from prior years by keeping everything in-house. My question is, though, is that things seem to continue to get more complicated as we look at ways to make the process more efficient, as we look at ways to get more people to vote, to be able to be more proactive. You've mentioned a few of those ideas here tonight, and that it increases the amount of burden, perhaps, on city staff, not to mention the Board of Election Judges and all of that. And I'm not placing a value judgment on that, but I just want to make sure, and this is really the comment or question to you, Ms. Ledlow, if we are providing sufficient funds for the election board to do all of this, I'm not saying that the money would not be well-spent, I'm sure that it will be, but I want to make sure that people are being, that we have the financial resources for the board to do what it needs to do, not just during the research period, but as changes need to be made in our election rules.
Obviously, I always look for the recommendations of the board on what kind of either staffing or equipment.
Right.
Should be used, and then we provide an amount in the budget, in the proposed budget for your consideration. And as soon as I heard the idea about providing additional staff support, I put a little arrow on there, that that's something that we'll be looking for. Hopefully, not for the upcoming budget, but certainly it would be something that would be in the list.
I think we are all aware that the workload on our city clerk was enormous, and she rises to the occasion every election and just sort of says, oh, it's no big deal. But it is a big deal.
It is a big deal.
And it's a lot of, there's...
There's a lot of staff.
Yeah, there's also a lot of pressure because there's no room for error or screw-ups. And miraculously, we pull off these elections so excellently that it really is wonderful.
Well, it is wonderful, and I, you know, I think that this year was particularly notable about how much extra time the Board of Elections put in before the elections. The outreach and the extra, the parade and all of the other kinds of things really was extraordinary. And although I think it was wonderful, it may not be something that can be continued year after year. And I think, you know, they'll get more used to it and have good recommendations, but it's an awful lot to ask of volunteers.
It is. If I may, the other comment is on a more prosaic matter, and that is, is that the election goes well into the night, and there is no, there's grossly inadequate exterior lighting at the front of our community center. I thought we had tried to address that a few years ago. I think we got some footlights on the bridge, so you can at least tie your shoelaces out there in the dark. But frankly, when you're standing as a candidate at the front of that building, it's very difficult to recognize faces. And I just think it's crazy that we don't have much better lighting year-round out on the front porch of our building. It's sort of like, after the sun goes down, we don't want anybody to know the building's there. You know, I mean, that's not just appropriate for, apropos of the election. Something needs to be done.
Councilmember Koreshi?
Thanks, Chairwoman Abbott. As a former Board of Elections person, I would be remiss if I didn't commend everybody on the board for the hard work you did, and I can see it, I know about it firsthand behind the scenes. And I got to say, I mean, the early voting location at Sligo Creek Park was one of the most amazing sort of examples of outreach and democracy that I've seen in, you know, in the many times that I've voted. And, you know, we actually have, I know a pair that moved in with our family in August, and she qualified to vote, and it was a really cool experience for her, for her coming from Columbia to be able to vote in our election, to see how open our process was and is. So I really appreciate all the work that you all did, because as much as we stayed here late to watch those hand ballots come in and went our ways, separate ways, to do what we needed to do to celebrate, I know you all were here still very late into the night. So I just want to say how much we appreciate it, because you do this all as volunteers and just what makes our community so great. I really appreciate this report. I was a little concerned about a Ward 3 write-in candidate named Terry Siemens. I don't know what he's trying to do running Ward 3. But then I saw some of my colleagues had Mickey Mouse and Bow Bow the Panda running against them, so I felt a little bit better. But I guess one question I would ask, it's a serious question, is it seems as if you've had a meeting or two since the election. In your debrief following the election, if there is a straw poll, if I can call it that, of the board members, what is the reaction about how the paper ballots worked, how effective you found that process to be, and if it's something that is something you're considering for future elections?
If, I have three other members of the board here, so if they disagree with what I say or want to add to what I say, I think we were pleased with the paper ballot. We are aware of other methodologies that can be used to count ballots that may give us a higher comfort level in case we had an instant runoff. In particular, if we'd have an instant runoff voting requirement at the level of the mayor, ways to handle it. We haven't talked about whether we would continue paper next year. I mean, next time, I'd be happy with it, but I don't know about the rest of the board. We never really actually got to that question.
And I guess a follow-up to that is... And I guess a follow-up to that is, as you compare previous elections where you were using machines, was your workload in terms of hours into the night that you're here, was it starkly different when you're doing paper ballots?
I'm going to say yes. When the votes were, when the ballots were scanned, the report from the program was within minutes at the end of the election. For that election, and then also on that election for write-ins, the scanning process, if there was a write-in, created a PFD file. So to look at write-ins, we could, next day, pull up PDF files to look at. For this election, we had tagged them, we had to pull, manually pull them, but we had tagged them, so we would, no, we hadn't, we had to go through all to look for write-ins. We tagged invalid or other, because we knew we wanted to look at those, but we had not tagged write-in. And that was one of the things we discussed of possibility, if we do paper again, how to get more easily to the write-ins. I mean, I actually was outvoted, I wanted us to have a fallback for the election of a scanner, and was outvoted. You know, if you're into paper, you know, commit to it. But I don't know if any three of you, anybody wants to add any thoughts on that, or Jim, you, no?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll just add my thanks to, for all of you, for all the hard work you're doing that you did, and I know that you have a lot of tasks ahead of you, and we look forward to working with you all in the future.
Thank you.
Did you get the answer you needed on requesting the federal data?
I'm sorry?
Did you get the answer you were looking for?
Yes. And if there are other questions, Jim's going to probably head that effort up, and I think he'll do a great job on it, look into the data.
Thank you.
Love it.
I think we're moving on now to the presentation of Crossroads Farmers Market, but I believe we just lost. She was just here. I looked up, and then she was gone. Okay. I guess she thought we were going to talk a little bit more. Well, why don't we just take a five-minute break, and we'll come back at seven-minute break, 8:50, everybody back in their seats. Crossroads Farmers Market, and I'll look at how your season went.
Love it.
Great, thanks for having me here this evening. Happy New Year, everyone. I'm here this evening to present a little bit about the season, but also to ask the council to pass another resolution for the use of Ann Street for the Crossroads Farmers Market continuously into the 2016 season, which is our tenth season, but also beyond. We're at the point that, for planning purposes and for our vendors, staff, and shoppers to feel secure in their market, it would be preferable to ask for, to receive permission to use the space on a more permanent basis. And as for the documents that I sent in advance, you'll see that we've had two tremendously successful seasons on Ann Street. So thank you, Councilmember Schultz, for recommending the site initially. We're delighted to set up there on Wednesdays around eight in the morning, and then the market runs from 11 to 3:00, and we're cleaned up and out of the location by 4:00 p.m. For example, total sales on Ann Street are now more double than what they were in our old location at 7676 New Hampshire. Ann Street has, over the time, proven to be the best site that Crossroads Farmers Market has had. We've had four different locations, and we are currently part of a national farmers' market metric study, and learning more information about our market, and also doing head counts. And so we now know that, on average, every Wednesday, we see more than 1,100 customers at the market, and it was half that in our old location. It's become such a special community gathering space, and truly a destination for community members and the farmer vendors from all ages, income levels, and backgrounds, to come and connect and to access healthy foods. But aside from food, we also facilitate a number of community partnerships. We see, or more than a dozen, community partners coming out over the course of the season. One of those community partnerships is between our farmers and Tacoma Park Meals on Wheels, who gleaned over 3,000 pounds of food this past season, and took that Crossroads Farmers Market produce, turned it into hot meals for homebound neighbors. I also oversaw over 48 volunteers dedicating 800 hours of community service at the Crossroads Farmers Market in 25 weeks in our 2015 season. For 2016, we've already confirmed seven returning staff and volunteers, so we're a project that has good consistency of staff and volunteers. And together, we bring 25 years of experience operating the market and its various corresponding programs. And 2016 will be my ninth year managing the market, and so we look forward to continued success on Ann Street, and we thank you to the city for your continued support of Crossroads, and for considering the request to be on Ann Street permanently. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any council comments or questions?
Love it.
Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you not just for coming tonight, but for all your dedicated work for the market. The market has grown and has met with a lot of success, and a great part because of the work that you and the other volunteers have put into it. I certainly support the request for a more permanent location there at Ann Street, and encourage my colleagues to do the same.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mal?
Sorry. My thanks as well, and fully support the request to remain there another year. I would be happy to support a two-year agreement if there's no reason not to do that, and we can always, we could do two years, and if you guys decide to move for some crazy reason, we could talk about some other location, but then you'd know for two years. I wanted to congratulate you on the visualization image or set of stats that you put together. I thought that was a really compelling way to share information on all the people that you're serving, customers, and would love to use that in, you know, sort of updates to constituents and things. It's just a nice example of a way to tell stories. So thank you, and welcome any more conversations directly or, you know, to all of us about ways we can continue to expand the work that you do and help Crossroads with your customers and our residents and the businesses that are there. Thank you.
Councilmember Schultz?
I also would support a two-year commitment to the closure of Ann Street. I think what we can do then is that next year, we could redo it for two years, so that you're always one year ahead each year as you go forward until you say, no mas, can't do it anymore, we need to move, we're got too big, or something like that. Which leads me to the question of, you're growing in the number of vendors from year by year, certainly the last two years, a lot. Is there, there must be some sort of realistic limit to how many vendors you could accommodate, and for that matter, maybe how many vendors you actually would want? Is there, do you care to comment on that?
I don't have a specific number in mind, but this past year, we grew by three permanent vendors, and I think that rate of growth is sustainable and good for us. We're not interested in bringing in too many vendors that would compete with the farmer vendors that we're currently supporting.
Have you, during the market day, with the vendors, some trucks there from the vendors, plus customers parking, have you had any complaints from people on, what's that, that's Hammond Avenue or Ann, or near, or any on the adjacent streets?
I have received no complaints, aside from the property owner discussions that we had prior to this past season. There was no follow-up from her during the season, that anything at 1021 University Boulevard was an issue with parking. She'd asked to put those additional no parking signs, which we did, and that was the only parking issue that I've heard in the last two years.
And you've not had any negative feedback from BF Saul management people with regard to taking advantage of their parking lot, even though they said, I gather the outcome is that they just said no, but have chosen to look the other way? Is that your impression?
Yeah, they had originally said no, and we communicate that to our shoppers in our newsletters and in our, on our website, and verbally on Wednesdays, that that is not market parking, but we've heard nothing.
Well, this, this, this farmers' market is astonishingly successful, you know. You've accomplished amazing things, reaching out to the very people that you really need to reach out to. I just think it's a feel-good situation. It seems like just helping you with the closure of Ann Street is not very much, but if it's all you need from the city, then God bless you. If there's anything else the city can do, then you need to let us know to help. And I don't know, have any ideas what that might be?
What about the bus? Is that maybe, is that working well?
We hire a bus that goes to Franklin Apartments and Victory Towers, and it is not well-used, and we're trying to determine if we should invest in that again next season, because we find that majority of seniors coming from those two residences are-